I filed the mine already.
Yeah, I don't need to read all that. It gets too legal.
I trust you.
Pull up the video and do this.
I'm sure you guys handled it professionally.
I don't know why we can't just.
People, people weren't wasted.
Why we can't just erase everything anyways. It seems perfectly fine for Hillary Clinton. She can just do whatever she wants.
Right.
Well, I can't do that.
I. I really didn't, I really wasn't meaning to speed. I mean.
They may need to corral some people.
Yeah, and I don't think that Josh should be having.
I think he may be trying to avoid something.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page.
Yep.
Well, I kind of like fix it in the winter.
Are we ready?
They're yelling, huh? You need to get some walkie-talkies.
Intercom.
That, that must be, that's.
I'm Mark Farren.
Huh?
I'm Mark Farren, new guy.
What?
Sorry, who are you? Yes, Mark Farren.
Oh, Mike, I'm Mel.
I'm Patrick.
No, it was a.
That's the budget.
Budget there for such June.
Oh, yeah. I know, but a little slow tonight.
All right, call this order. You have to calm down.
We'll, we'll call the meeting back to order. We're back from recess and we do have a quorum here tonight. All five members are here. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On, next up is amendments on the agenda. And I am going to add C under seven. And that'll be Assistant, Assistant PIT Discussion. Are there any other amendments to the agenda?
Yeah.
Ruth, you don't have any more amendments, right?
I, I, no.
Okay. All right, next up is public comment. If we, do we have any public comment this evening? Seeing none. Consent agenda?
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next up is a discussion of budget with the Budget Committee. And we. So we have six members of the Budget Committee here? And.
I'm impressed.
I'm Cory.
If the members of the Budget Committee.
Can you mark, place some of them? For the new budget people and Cory.
Yes.
I need your email addresses before you leave. Okay?
Cory, did you, you got your email from me?
Yes, and I haven't done anything because I've been on vacation and just got that.
No, that's okay. I'm speaking to you. Did, did everybody get emails from me?
Yeah.
Okay, then I have everybody's.
So. I, I see there are a couple of new members to the Budget Committee. I'm Jeff Wakeman. I'm the chairman of the Selectmen. And we have Josh Libby and Sarah Hall as the vice chair. And Mark Blake and Mike Stewart. And you.
I'm Mark Farren. Over on Fennel Drive.
Welcome.
Rick Evans from Patriot Way.
Welcome. Thank you for being willing to serve on the committee. And I guess at this point, I'm going to open. I think some of you have had a chance to review some of it. And if, you can take some time to review it as well. But if there are any questions or anything that you'd like to ask, feel free. I'm, I'm sure there are going to be some. Terry.
He's never viewed it.
No, 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 I, well, I wasn't actually intending, I was actually opening it up for questions.
Well, I heard you better.
No, I figured that I, that some may need some time to review as well. But we could take some questions as we went along.
Well, what might be helpful is just to go through, are there any changes or any anomalies from the last time we talked about the budget? Other than the workers' comp that obviously is continuing to be high?
Yes, I did notice that. And.
That was one of my questions. Why, how did we underestimate that demand?
Well, the, the underestimation came because they audited last year's. And so the, the negative amounts are from the audit from last year, which I wasn't expecting. Last year I was expecting the audit to be off, but this year I, I wasn't. And it was significantly off.
We didn't have that audit at town meeting?
No, we didn't, they didn't have the audit. We didn't have the audit bill until after town meeting.
So the second question would be, in times past when you've had like an overage like that, how do you cover that?
We're going to have to cover it out of different line items. We're going to have to figure out how to.
Reduce on the line, line items?
Well, we don't reduce them. We just underspend them so that it makes up for that. Yeah. And I did check for next year's. So I checked against the audit for next year and what I had given. And we're good for next year. So we shouldn't have such a huge audit bill afterwards.
The only other thing that jumped out for me was the expenditures on the elections.
Yeah, isn't that fantastic?
Some of them jumped out. Some people will be happening in November.
Yeah.
I mean, you're talking about 83%? I want to go back and look at that.
I see 50% on payroll.
Yeah, 50% on the payroll.
And the expenses, what, the part of that, we bought, we already bought the, the booths on the election expenses.
Yes.
Is that 90%?
Yes.
We bought the booths, which was at least 50% of the budget.
Right.
So it's a one-time, are you in there?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Terry.
I, I guess, I have a couple of questions here. And I don't know if you can answer them or not. We, we budgeted $16.50 to fix the sinkhole repair. And it appears that right now it's not been fixed.
I, I haven't, I haven't transferred the money. We budgeted it to reimburse the undesignated fund for the money that we had taken out for emergency last year. So I have not reimbursed that yet.
It's just a transfer.
Right.
But it has been fixed.
Yes. And I usually do that a little closer to the end of year, to be honest. I make sure that we're doing okay.
I have another question.
Okay.
We budgeted at town meeting for the fire department, fire station payment and a quick payment. And what exists is not been paid yet.
They're on tonight's warrant.
Yeah, they're both due in July.
Well, my question is this. If it was budgeted at town meeting, would the town not get something if it was paid off early? Would there be $50, $100 or whatever reimbursed to the town because we paid it off early?
We can't pay it off early.
One of the things is because of the way that our tax year is also, if we can push some of those larger cash payments out until tax money start coming in, so we're not using bond anticipation note money. We're not using borrowed money to pay the loan payment. If we push it up till when it's actually due in July, when some tax revenues have started to come in.
Do we take a tax anticipation loan this year?
Yes.
We did, yeah.
What was the interest on that?
0.89%.
Are you asking dollar, dollar amounts or are you asking percentage amount?
Percent don't mean anything to me without a calculator.
I, I don't have a dollar amount yet because I haven't paid it back. So when I pay it back is when they determine how much interest I owe them. Because we, we could conceivably go to December 31st and not pay it back. But I do pay it back as soon as I have cash for it. So last year it's about $200, $250. But we also pay a bond council to help me do the tan, which is about $1,500.
So the tax anticipation loan costs $250, is that what you're saying?
An interest plus $1,500, basically in lawyer fees. So you're talking about $1,700 to $1,800 to do a tax anticipation loan.
Now, I'll go ask this question again. If we had paid the fire station payment and a quick payment, would we have got some of this money back?
We don't have the cash to pay the quick payment and the fire station before it's due.
Because, we, we're having to borrow because we don't have, we're having to do the tan because we don't have enough funds available to, to meet all of our bills until we can send out the tax bills.
I understand. When do you borrow the money?
About May, was it?
May, we borrowed it this year in May.
We borrow it in May. We pay it back as soon as we can, which will probably be late July this year.
And for new members that, that may be a little bit confused, what, the essential issue is that we are on a calendar year budget. And with the task scheduling of town meeting and the school budget, we don't actually commit taxes until June. So the money starts coming in and really this time of year. But meanwhile, we have expenses that date all the way back to January. So we frequently end up having to take. No, I, I was explaining to, for the new members. I know you understand.
Recently, we, up until a few years ago, because of the way the, the way monies came in for the school, we always had some cash flow. And that changed and we ended up not having the cash flow. Plus, we used a fair amount of our, what we call, undesigned funds, which are monies that are, are not designated to anything in particular. We, we had used a lot of that. So we did not have enough to cover us from January to July. So the past four or five years, we've had to take out tax anticipation notes.
So am I correct to understand that if, once we get the undesigned fund back to where it once was, we'll no longer need to be taking out the tax anticipation loan?
Or, I'm not sure if it's where it once was or to where we want it to be. Yes. That's, that's, that's a goal, to have enough in there to cover our expenses so that we don't have to do that. And, but it's going to take, it's going to take many years to get us to that point unless we do something and where we add money to our tax bill one year to, where we say, let's put $300,000 towards that and tax everybody to do that. But otherwise, we, we have to do it on what's not used on the overlay and what's not used in a few small budget lines. And.
I guess I didn't understand that would take that long. But the message, the perception of the message I got, two years ago, when we stepped, when we said we weren't going to use any monies from the undesigned fund list to rebuild that. And then we didn't hit our goal last year. So it was presented that, you know, we're going to work on that again this year. But.
It's, it's.
You're not saying it was years away?
It's, it's a multi, well, number one, we had a setback last year because of our error in committing the taxes. So we had almost $200,000 setback last year. And typically, we, we would roll over about 100,000, somewhere between 100 and $150,000 into the general fund, I mean, into the undesigned funds by, through either the unspent budgets or through overlay that wasn't used. But we're looking, I think we're at somewhere around 800,000 right now. We were at 800,000 at January 1st. I believe we want to be somewhere near 1.5 million. And so if you're only, if you're only gaining $100,000 a year, it takes a while. And I believe, I, I believe I presented that when, when we were talking about this even two or three years ago, that this is going to be, it's going to be a process. It's going to take a while.
Right, and our two largest departments, the, any unspent funds in those departments don't roll into the undesigned fund. They roll into those departments' capital funds. So the amount of funds that, that actually do roll into undesigned funds is, is a smaller percentage of, of the unspent funds of the budget.
How much was the overlay this year?
121,000.
Yeah. We.
Percentage?
Two, two, between two and two and a half, I think.
Yeah, something like that, yeah. About 2%.
Somewhere around 2% overlay, which.
I'm sorry. I have a problem with about 2%.
I think it was two and, it was close, it was almost two and a half. 2.4%, I think is what it was.
I can go get the.
See, see, some of that money that Jeff was talking about back a few years ago, I remember when Alan was on the Budget Committee, we used to use some of that, might to keep the taxes down because of the new school thing. So that's where some of that money got drained from. So kind of at a point where we're trying to put it back.
Made the tax commitment this year. The overlay, you put a percentage into that.
Right.
What was that percentage? And you can do up to 5%.
Right. But the, the, we didn't do up to 5% because the overlay is not to replenish our undesigned funds. The overlay is to cover abatements and other, abatements and non-payment of taxes. So we should not be, we should not be considering what our undesigned funds are at when we're calculate, when we're trying to determine what to use for an overlay. We should only be considering abatements and unpayment of ta, or non-payment of taxes and things like that with a bit of a buffer beyond that. And that's why we don't, that's why we don't do the full 5% because it's, it's not, it's not what it's there for.
But we do budget for abatement. At town meeting.
No, no, the overlay is to cover abatements. There, there's no, there's no line in here for abatements, I don't believe.
And, and I see the abatement line right now is.
Is a negative.
Over $2,000 in the red.
Because there's no budgeted line item at the end of the year that's taken out of the overlay.
And that comes out of administrative expenses?
No, it, it comes out of the overlay. So in other words, at the end of the year, if it's $2,000, that 121,000 would be subtracted, 2,000 would be subtracted from that. And the rest can go into undesigned funds.
Right, the overlay amount of 121,460.10 does not appear as a line item on the budget. It's part of the tax commitment. But at the end of the year, when the books are reconciled, any abatements get subtracted from that overlay amount. And then anything that's left goes into undesigned.
In the administrative expenses? You have the abatement line.
Yes.
So as of right now, is that coming out of administrative expenses?
No. It's, 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 it's there for accounting purposes, but the money is not included in the administration expenses. The money is taken out of the.
At, at the end of the year, you'd make a journal entry, right?
The auditors do.
Yeah, the auditors make a journal entry to cover that amount.
Right.
So it, it doesn't affect the bottom, it, it shows today because, because that journal entry hasn't been made. But it doesn't affect, at the end of the year, it doesn't affect the bottom of line of that budget. It's, it's, it ends up zeroed out.
Would that not be better to have it online?
Probably look better in my budget.
We, we could do some, we could do something like that. And, and then it's, it's something that you'll always see as a zero, you'll see as a zero at the end of the year. But that might, you want to look into what we could do to do that?
I, I don't know. I've always done it as, I mean, I could put it in a different expense.
Well, I was thinking, keeping it, give it its own expense line.
I could give it its own expense line.
That it's not affecting anybody's.
Right, but we can't set a specific number for it during the budget season because we won't have the actual.
Right.
I have one other question. We've had a lot of appeals this year. And I noticed under the planning, I'm assuming that this all comes out of the planning board or whatever, the appeals?
Most of it would come, I would think would come out of there, yes.
Postage, what you see in June, that has a lot. The other thing is, a lot of the appeals, the people who bring the appeals to the appeals board are required to pay for the certified postage and for any advertising costs that we incur. So when I advertise a newspaper and they charge me $72 to advertise, I bill the talent and then they reimburse me for that money.
So all of the appeals that we've had this year is not, none of them monies are involved in the planning board?
Just some of the postage to the members of the appeal board. The actual certified mail postage is actually in my budget. And then I reimburse it with the money that I get from the people.
Labor, labor lines, if we, if we're paying them, that would come out of here.
We don't pay them, but we do pay the secretary.
Oh, so, oh, so the.
The appeals board is not paid.
Okay, I did not realize that.
Along with the budget missed.
I did, I did realize that because that was at the Budget Committee's question many years ago.
Meet twice a year, right?
Are, are there any other questions from the Budget Committees? Or any process questions if, from new members or from anybody that has any questions on how things are accounted for or anything like that?
Just, just again, for my own clarification, the, the two, there are two places where the workers' comp is really sticking out. You're saying that those two amounts are based on the results of last year's audit. It's not that we've had an increase in.
Right.
Claims for 2016.
Right, so what happens is I get the bill and we, it's paid in four separate payments during the year. So I have a specific, when I go into budget season, I have a specific bill. And I went off that bill. And then in April, they sent me, after town meeting and everything, they sent me a new bill from the audit that they did on our payroll from 2015, which turned out to be a pretty large amount. So the reason you see the negatives in my budget and in fire is because we haven't gotten to the point yet where we're paying out of the Public Works budget because I, I go down the line. As we pay the bills, I separate it out. So first I pay out of my budget, then I pay out of fire budget, and then I pay out of Public Works budget. So you will see big negatives on all of those lines.
And should we have additional claims for this year? Is that going to be, that, that will affect next year's budget?
Right, our modification for next year will change and it'll go up.
We already, we already know it's going, going to go up because we had an additional claim last year and that's going to affect us next year.
So annually, in April, you'll get the next audit.
Right.
And so for our planning purposes, we need to be conscious of this every year.
Right, and so when I got the audit this year and my eyes bugged out, I went back to what I had sent them at the beginning of the year for our payroll. And I checked it against the budget and I checked it against projections. And, and it looks like we'll be okay next year.
Is, is April the earliest we can get that audit?
That's when they send us the bill, yeah.
That's not what I.
I, I, I know what you're asking. You're asking if this, can I call them up and have them give me the? I suppose, Terry, if I wanted to, I could, I could conceivably run the audit myself and find out where we are.
Well, the, the thing of it is, is when we went to the April meeting from March to April, several things were supposed to take place because we were running this a month later, town meeting, all right? We were supposed to have all the audits done and everything else. The, the town report was supposed to be ready more than a week before town meeting. And my question is, is we can't get that audit in March to make sure that our figures are correct or?
Well, MMA are the people that do the audit. And I suppose I could call them and ask them if they could get it to us early. But I, I don't know if they could.
It might be helpful to, to at least ask that question. At least we could roll it into our budget deliberations.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I mean.
Because it's quite a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. That'd be nice to know that. But we're talking at least them getting us the number, or the, the numbers at least two months in prior to when they already get it to us. And that's, that's a.
Right.
I mean, that's a pretty tall order, but we can try. We can see what we can do.
Even a ballpark would.
Yeah.
Well, I do have a sense of.
If it came in and if the Budget Committee meeting was over, but you had that confirmed figure for town meeting, you could change that figure off the floor.
That's true. I don't, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like to do that because I can imagine the questions we'd get on that. But I, I, we could do that if we happen to know, oh, we're going to get hit with this. We, we could do that, too.
I mean.
But we're paying customer.
Workers' comp is one of them bills that you have to pay. I mean, it's not like, okay, we're going to negotiate this. It's not up for negotiation.
Oh, we got to pay, yeah.
You got to pay it. I mean, and I think the townspeople would understand that.
We, we'll see what we can do. Just out of curiosity, did you go back and look at last year's numbers that you submitted? And what, and, and see that we, oh, we did make, we did make a mistake in what we sent and stuff?
Yeah. Yeah, because it was done, a, a big part of the issue was we hadn't had a full year with Public Works yet. And so the numbers are due before December 31st. And it was my first three months. And I was anticipating, they, what they do is they do a certain percentage. And we were anticipating a certain percentage. And what I should have done is after we had done it, I should have changed the numbers.
So we, we sent the numbers in before we ever prepared the budget.
Right.
The, getting back to the workers' comp, I'm just asking a question here. Right now, we're $7,300 and some dollars. And I'm just looking at Public Works. I noticed that there's another line in administration or whatever. Is that figure going to climb between now and December 31st?
Yes.
Would it be safe to assume that this figure will possibly double?
Let's see here, not double.
This is only six months and we're $7,000 in the hole.
Well, the, the payments go down. So the first payment's a bigger payment. The second payment's a little less. Third payment's a little less. And then the fourth payment is at least not in the payment. If I remember correctly, and I can go look, Terry, if you want me to, I think that Public Works is going to be around negative 9,000. And the fire department is not.
Fire department right now is in the plot.
Yeah, I know, but we got to pay out of that. And then they're going to go down into the red about $1,500, I believe.
Administration?
I'm, I'm there. I'm at 253 in the red and that's what I'm going to say.
And that's why you're going to stay on administration? That's not going to increase at all?
No.
So roughly half again as much.
Well, part of, part of this is simply going to the Public Works Department and giving some feel year in, year out, what the hit's going to be for comps as well as other expenses. So we're still early in this game, I think.
Is there, is there a way that we can? What's preventing us from, you know, for the Budget Committee and the Stockman meeting a little sooner than last minute when it comes to the new budget? We start the process. Typically, we, I mean, for the last few years, we've met when we've had a week to go. And so, I mean, we, we used to be, we had a little leeway.
We were late, at least on one of those.
Yeah, we, we were, we were, we were running a little late, though. Since I've been on the board, it's always been second or third week of February that we've met. And I've, I've been on a board for six years. It's always been, the, the first time that we meet has been like the second or third week in February. But yes, both, both last year and, or for the 2015 and the 2016 budget, we, the Selectmen were running behind. I, I'm, we, we're going to try to do a better job this year. It, and I, I can't promise that we're going to, but we're going to try and see what we can do. So to give us a target, when would you like to start the budget meetings?
Well, I, I mean, you've been on, Phil, as long as I have. I mean, I've been early in February. We already had our dates. We knew we were meeting.
Well, we were meeting in January because town meeting used to be in March.
But that hasn't been for 15 years or something like that.
Then it moved to February. And just like I said, the last two years felt like it was pretty rushed. And just like I said, the last two years felt like it was pretty rushed. I didn't know, I, I, I knew things were contributing to it, but I, my question's going to address those concerns.
So, so what's, what's your target? Because I, I know that we, we also had some comments that they didn't like it for, during February vacation. So, what are the, what, what are the targets from the budget committee that you'd like to, you want first week of February, second week of February, third week is February vacation, I think, usually, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to shoot for-
Second week?
You know, at least by the second week, first of the second week.
Okay.
Then we're not, then we're just, we're not quite as pressured if we have to meet again, if there's time to do it, it's not like this is it, you know, we can't meet again. And then, just, I don't know if it's probably too hard to bring it up, I'm just looking at my, some of my notes. We had requested that the way the budget is presented to us next year, that eliminate the column in which, you know, you were showing what was originally requested and instead put, put back the column that showed one, one additional year of expenditures.
I'd be glad you met with them.
I, I think it's a lot better than what we've done in the past years where it's like, come February, we all sit down and you guys have no idea what's been going on across the year. So, our meetings are till eleven o'clock at night, so it makes no sense.
It really-
This makes much-
Yeah, we're, we're already headed game where we were last year, so.
I just want to say that I'm running into some issues this year with maintenance on this building and so I don't know what we're going to do next year for the budget, but remember I put eight hundred dollars to the side to paint this place? And most of that is gone for air conditioning repair and generator repair. So, I don't know what we're going to do for maintenance on this building, because I, I think that there are issues that need to be addressed at some point.
Oh, I know this sounds funny, but we have, the high schoolers all have to have community credits and for volunteering and I bet you can probably get a group of high school students to paint out some of these rooms and they would get their community volunteer hours for that, something like this.
That was just for the paint anyways. I, I think I was laying on, hoodwinking other people into painting. But yes, that's a great idea, I, I think, and I would love to use them for other things as well.
If we, are we doing anything with this million dollar plus road bond project that we got going on or is that?
What do you mean, are we doing anything?
We're spinning it right along.
Let me, we're, I mean, we, we're, we're well on the way into the project.
Oh, okay.
The, the grinding, I think, is going to be happening fairly shortly, but- Monday? So, we've, we've already started, we've done most of the culverts and a lot, ditching's been started and trees have been cut and-
See it down by Runaround Pond, yeah, 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 so, good. And it orders the, the new privy is-
It's in place.
A war fishing it out of the pond.
I hope.
That was the suggestion.
And we have a new bridge.
Just one more question as the new guy, so the next time that we get together is February or is there something?
Or, do you, I mean, do you want another meeting before then? Do you want to review it, review the budget sometime, early December or, or early January before you meet for the actual budget meetings or?
Well, I feel that, you know, any information we can get before budget committee meeting is a help.
I mean, we could base, like, the first week of January, we could send you the, the final budget report for last, for this year, because, once, once the audit's done and once our audit is done, they've done their transfers, we could, that can be sent out anytime, early January, probably.
Well, also, if you could routinely just send us the quarterly reports.
Right, that's-
That's what I was going to recommend, is just quarterly.
Yeah.
But I, but by scheduling a meeting, if, if one might be desired, we'll only make the budget committee meetings that much less.
That's what I'm asking, if you want, we could meet, I don't know when, I'm kind of trying to feel you guys out what you, when you would like it.
Right, we meet every other Tuesday, so anytime you-
I'm more, I'm more than happy to have you attend and, and go over it.
Yeah, first of December, fine.
Okay, so-
That'll already weed out some of the questions that will be asked in February.
Yeah.
Do we, do we have a, a date for that, so we can actually pin a date on our first meeting in December?
I'd have to look at my calendar if I can do. I think it's like the sixth.
Tuesday the sixth?
You, you're, you're going to notify us anyway, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll remind, I mean, we'll, we'll send out a reminder on it, too, so, yeah. We wouldn't expect you to-
Make the meetings in February that much.
Yeah.
More efficient.
And by that point, I, the department head should at least be starting the planning and hopefully well, well into their planning for their budgets for the next year by, by December, because if we're going to meet early February, we're going to need to, the selectmen are going to need to start their thing early January.
And in January, you said you're going to send the budget committee year end?
Yeah, year end budget sheet.
Yeah, so that point, we'll have all the quarterly leads and we'll have the year end.
When in December does the, do you actually close the books?
December 31st. And then, we're audited the first week in January, so there's not much of a leeway time for me. I, I'm, December's my, my month to get ready for audit and then I get audited.
I guess, I, I guess what I was thinking I was asking, which I wasn't clear, was, do you have any of those numbers or how close do you have to those numbers before you actually close? I know you actually closed on the 31st, because we actually shut down the, the building half a day early, whatever, but is there any of that information that's almost completed before that you actually shut it down? I mean, within that first, that last week?
Well, I mean, I could print up a copy of the totals up to that particular day.
They're, they're already going to have through the end of November by that point, which is, and so on.
Okay.
So, rather than send them one thing and a couple of weeks later, send them any corrections that had to be made during the audit, by all.
Yeah, and, and I, yeah, I, I'm not, I mean, like, I could do forecasts and stuff, but to be honest, at that point in time, I'm-
Okay, I, I just, just to try to make it clear, so we had most, all the information.
Right.
You know, that's, okay.
Well, they'll have the November, because-
They have the November, right.
They'll have all the way up through the November 30th for the December meeting. And then, right after I get audited in the, the first part of January, I can send them. And, and actually, I could send them a preliminary as of December 31st, even before I get audited. I mean, that's easy enough to do.
Yeah, that should be, because that's usually fairly close.
Yeah, we don't usually have a ton of-
Yeah, that's kind of where I was, all right, oh, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Do you ever have any questions?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Good night.
See ya.
I'm going to take C out of order so that we can do B and then go right into road commissioners for control. So, someone could run it up and down.
Yeah, that works.
Actually, if you want, stick for just a second, this one, our assistant, assistant PIT discussion. The assistant PIT discuss, discussion, it had been suggested to us that we allow you and Ruth to interview and select the assistant PIT and then you'd still need to bring it back to us for final approval, but just-
Okay.
You could do the interviews and, and-
Sure.
Select and, and so on and then bring it back to us.
It makes more sense, you have a better sense of-
Because she missed Alden already, though.
Yeah, we did, we did meet with someone today, but you, you can call and talk to them and, and see, see what you feel. And I, I don't know that we'll weigh in on any, on it, but there was a second person that had expressed interest. We have not received an application as of yet. We, I don't believe we put an, an end date on this, so it's basically until, until we find somebody suitable for the position.
Okay, sounds good.
So, I will make the motion that we allow our administrator and our PIT to do the interviews and make a selection to forward to the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Much better suited than I.
We just passed them up. Especially since I'm still taking pitches.
All right, next up is the Department of Labor Inspection Report. If you want to speak to it and what?
Did, did you get that letter?
Yeah, I gave them the letter and I gave them a copy of the actual report.
Okay, oh, they have the report?
Yep, we got it.
Oh, did we kill too many trees?
Number two, I haven't fixed yet and I have to rewrite the policy, which is apparently one that we have is missing a couple of things in it that no one else had picked up on before, but it was, so I'm rewriting it. So, this was just a rough, I can make this neater before I'm done with it, but I just want to show this for you tonight so you can see where I'm at with it. Before we mail it in, I'll actually have this done. So, I did talk with Michael, I have his name on the front there, I guess I didn't bring that piece, but I spoke with the director, not the director, but he's the guy that runs everything up there, Michael, anyway. And he said, you know, five hundred bucks is minors. Usually, public works, you start around three to four at least, and so he said for five hundred and fifty bucks, you're doing pretty good. So, he said, just, he said, just write it out, just like I did, send it in, and he said, we don't, we're not going to come check and see everything that's going on, but he said probably, on the one where there was the five hundred and fifty dollar fine, probably we want to see proof of that, which I have, I've already sent it to him, so, but I've got the records from my prior employer, so. If you want to go through these.
So, so, looking through this, at this point, the only one that's not been addressed is number two.
How much, yeah. And we have a policy, it's just not, a hundred percent, it's missing a couple of components that I've got on, but it's not that simple a fix, I have to, I have to go through it and basically start over, so.
When do you think you'll be able to have that? Because that one's actually a pretty, a pretty serious lockout-tagout, it's a pretty, a pretty big, pretty big deal.
And, you know, we do the training on it and we have the policy, it's just that there was a couple of things in it that, so I've called him and I'm waiting for a call back from him, because there are two different options. There are, there's either the hazardous energy control or there's lockout-tagout. And why they're both in there, I don't know, but you can use apparently either one, so he's supposed to answer that for me as soon as he gets back to me which one he wants.
It'll be the same.
Well, they should be the same, but if you go on their website and look, there's two, two different ones.
I do all the training in mind.
I have no idea why there's a lockout-tagout and then there's a hazardous energy control. They're the same thing, but the two different titles and-
So, we didn't have a procedure at all for lockout-tagout for any of our guys?
We did.
Was that what we got hit on?
Yep, but we did have a procedure, it's just that she said there's a couple of things in there that, if you look.
Are our guys all trained up now? Because our workman's comp's going to the roof, so we're all trained up and all safe, right?
Yep. So, when I get those couple of changes, we'll just update that.
You don't, you don't see any issue having this evaded by their, their deadline of August 30th?
We do have to do some response by-
By tomorrow, right? Well, July tomorrow, the fif, fif, fifteen days is tomorrow, I think.
Fifteen business days.
Oh, business day.
And he said, he said it's their business day, so he said you got until July 20th. And he said, just send this in, and he said, or you don't have to send this in yet, he said, just send in that-
The letter, that you guys all have.
Letter, requesting a penalty discussion and they'll cut ninety percent of the penalty out. So, with the electrician came over and fixed all the electrical stuff and took the paintbrush out of the freezer and-
The electrician took the paintbrush out of the freezer?
We did that, so.
Put a sign on the freezer, do not store paintbrushes?
I think we all, I think we all know that now. And so, I think, you know, you know, the heaven's pressure in the tanks and the oxygen settling tanks, I think most people probably have enough leaks in theirs that they wouldn't hold pressure, so I think I was just too good. So, they still have pressure on them, but that won't happen again. And we took the, in front of the electrical panel and we painted thirty-six inch-
Clear.
Yeah. It's all yellow, solid yellow, so you know if it's sitting on yellow, it doesn't belong there, so you don't have to bother to even look up. And then, we've got also placards that we're putting on the panels that say thirty-six inch clear space required, so caution, warning, symbols, so. Didn't, do we have, was all this stuff inspected when we bought the building?
This is all safety above and beyond the building.
Some of this, I mean, some of this stuff is also, yeah, like the, the eye wash, the stuff that we put in and the, and the battery, whatever it was, we've, we've put in or we move stuff in front of an electrical panel that shouldn't have been there.
Lockout tagout is, no, like, no, that's all our procedures that we should put in place to begin with, and we didn't.
Well, lockout tagout was in place and then safety-
Wasn't up to par, I mean, what'd they nail us on?
Safety works has looked at, everyone's looked at it and they've had a problem and all of a sudden, now she's having-
So, what'd they nail you on, then, if it was up to par?
Oh, just, you said there was some couple of components that didn't have in there that it needed to have, so it's not a big deal.
Because didn't our insurance agent go walk through as well at one point? Yeah, we had the safety works inspection, yeah.
And we also have MMA inspection. They come through and check all the policies.
How many months ago was that, years ago, a few months ago?
No, that was last fall, I think.
Yeah, it was like nine or ten months. We were just outside of six months. Yeah, because if we'd have been inside there six months, you wouldn't even have been here.
Right.
But, we were just outside of that.
Okay.
That's that, you have a, is it a safe, is that the program? It's a program that you have over there, Bill?
Shape, shape.
Shape, shape, okay, shape program. Now, that puts you in a better place so we don't have to go through this.
He said, as soon as we're done with this, we'll discuss that and we'll go on. He said, that's the program we should be in, so we'll go on to that and then, he said, you will not worry about this. He said, most public works, he said, if it's public works and you've got five hundred and fifty dollars, he said, that's pretty much unheard of, they start at usually three to four thousand, so.
I guess we should congratulate you then. You only fined us five hundred dollars and fifty dollars.
And, and you're still going to abate ninety percent of that.
Motion, can we get a motion on the letter?
I move that we accept the letter to the Bureau of Labor Standards as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries and making, so this is all we have to send by the 20th, okay.
You have an official one, these are just copies?
Yep, I have one for you guys to all sign.
Can, can you keep us up to date on-
Yep.
Where things are on?
So, he should send that registered mail, just-
Okay, I can do that.
For the sake of-
And while you're here, we'll just do your report.
Okay. So, that takes care of that, now I'm going to get back to the-
Get over everybody, because he was the last one on the list.
Too bad. Me, too.
Just right.
Perfect.
He's getting good at this.
So, we got the rubber tracks for the excavator. Bill came in at sixty-nine hundred, those are all on. Just finished it today, so they started it this morning, they're on today, so. That's ready to go. Looking at Grinding Rabbit Road Monday. We've gone up and finished most of the culverts along the way. We put them in, some of them we put in, we just put them in at the depth that we know the ditch is going to be when the ropes- that we know the ditch is going to be when the road's done, so they might look like they're lower than the ditch, but there's a reason for that. We put them in under the driveway. There were some, there was one driveway on Rabbit Road, before you get through Route 9 on the right, it goes right uphill, that, there's a ditch coming down, a ditch going beyond, and there was just, this driveway went straight up, so you can tell at one point, there had to have been a ditch there. So, as we dug in there, the culvert was in there, just got buried over in both ends, so the ditch wasn't working, but, so that ditch, that culvert sitting in there, lower, getting that much dirt on both sides of it sticking up, but the average person might look at that and say, Jesus, these guys know what they're doing.
But there is a method to the madness, is what you're telling us?
When the road is built up and gets finished, that will be it.
Right.
And then we come through and ditch, that'll be right at the 27-inch mark. But I don't want to ditch it now, because then, when we get that done, then we have to come back through and do all the in slope work, where we could do all that while we're ditching and fix our in slope and finish it in one shot.
Tree removal's done?
Yep, yep, I had to go get a couple more. That lady with the trees came down, I guess she, found her, she's got her wood, so, and-
She's happy.
Well-
Best we can do.
She asked us not to work in front of her house for a week or so, because her dog went to the fireworks and broke his neck, so, so we will have to be sensitive to working in that area for, Ron says, what, a day or two? She says, no, probably a week, so we gotta, we gotta make sure we don't go, it'll be a week before we get to that side, so. We were just there and left, so.
We'll, we'll work with them as best we can, but we can't slow the progress down.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll be as sensitive as we can be.
Yep.
So, have you, have a date for you on the slip line?
Nope. I called them again today and he texted back, said it's still not here. They're waiting for the, whatever that product that goes in there, they're waiting for that to show up, so.
Oh, have they gave you a price out on the other one, no?
No. So, the other one, if I don't get a price, if I don't get a price by next, you know, by Monday, I'll just go, we'll just do it. I went over and cut the trees today that are on top of, the trees that they grow on top of it. We took those down today in case we have to, either way, I don't want those growing on top of the culvert, so. Cable company, we're waiting for them to finish their hookup, so we can backfill that trench and rip out the other stuff. Looking at going over to Stackpole tomorrow and start putting the shoulders on.
If that holds up like it did up on Boy Hill, we should be in good shape.
Yeah.
It's held up very well over there.
Yeah.
With the exception of somebody trying to do burnouts with studs in it to his.
I'll take my tires off to start with the other ones, huh?
Yeah.
Did we, were we not ready for Crook on the 5th, on Tuesday there, last Tuesday?
Last Tuesday?
Yeah, you sent them away.
Oh, yeah, we-
Dumped in my lap, that's why I'm asking.
Well, we were in Powell, actually. They were going to come in and pave a road in Hudson Road. I said, we're not paving that road, it isn't ready yet, so. We still have roads and the-
I had Jim and the other guy over there dump to me on Tuesday.
Yeah, we still have cross pipes to put in, so that, they said, well, we'll go Lisbon, and I don't care, where you go, just go on somewhere besides here.
Anything else from you, or any, any questions? Thank you.
Hi, Calvin.
Chief? Welcome back.
Well, thanks.
And we also, congratulations on the New England-
President of the New England Association.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, and it, actually, where I have been gone for a while, I really don't have a bunch of stuff going on to report to you, so if you guys have stuff for me.
No.
Have a good night.
Um, the only thing, somebody asked about the park lot over there, I guess, because you was going to do some more research on who was going to do it or whatever and the stuff, and somebody asked me if you'd made that decision, and I said, I don't know.
The what?
The, the concrete and the stuff in the park lot over there in front of the fire station.
Actually, we just talked about getting together and-
Oh, okay.
In regard to him doing it inside the station, we have to meet the outside, I would assume more than likely, I think he's the one that does it a lot of times, for Crook, so I would assume that will happen. As far as the inside, I got to make some calls, he's one of the ones I got to call and go back to the people, because I actually have three people that gave me price quotes on the job, ask a few questions and stuff, based back in the initial stages and stuff. I guess the only thing I can really, I can't speak to the quality of the workmanship, but I, the only thing I can throw out there is I do know right off the top of my head, he was not the lowest priced one in there, but lowest price isn't necessarily what I want to focus on. I want to focus on-
Well, actually, it wasn't, you're talking about the contract. I wasn't necessarily talking about him, I just had a couple people ask about it, because they knew it was coming. I said, well, I think he was going to revisit that and make a decision, so. And I hadn't, I said, well, I know he's been on vacation, so, that's, that was all, just, just to see if you hadn't had a chance to, but-
Yep.
That's fine. No, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
I bet you'll be glad when fireworks season is over. Said, I bet you guys will be glad when fireworks season is over. Probably keeps people on their toes over at the station.
So, Mike and the guys actually did an excellent job. They really, they took a little extra time, because it's home turf, and you guys can be proud of what he did there, so. They did talk to Tomlin Scott about it, he'd swung by and see, he was waiting for the apron to go on. I shot him the photographs, they're going to run down and put up the boat launch sign, I'm assuming probably this week coming, but they were, they were pretty tickled with the way that it turned out as well, so.
That's good.
We made everybody happy in regards to run around pond. Pretty handsome piece of work right there, I tell you, that's, that's, that's close to a subdivision grade.
Did he have anything to go by, or did you give him any?
There was a, yeah, there's a state plan that they produce, which just tells them the tank size and all of the standards. Yeah, the only, the only thing missing is the toilet paper holder, so we're going to have to look into doing that. It wasn't required by state, it wasn't included. There'd be a, there'd be a nice spot for a toilet paper vendor to sit right there and sit in the shade, drink lemonade and sell it by the sheet, for sure, but, yeah, that's a, that's a really sweet addition. And the park is really pretty well used this summer. Folks are really enjoying it, and I'm glad to see it.
Are we putting any kind of lexan or anything up around them tops for closing night in? That's just the way that stays.
Yeah, and these, plenty of air is a good thing in a-
Oh, yeah, I, I know that. I just, I'd actually stopped over and seen it, and I was half of what I saw, but I, that was the only thing, I was wondering if they were going to put something up.
Everybody's in there long enough to worry about the mosquitoes.
Well, I hope not, yeah.
Be dragging a magazine in there. In and out's a good idea, so.
Well, I would, I would think that you wouldn't want to be spending-
There's no toilet paper anyways, so the better.
Do you want me to have, do you want me to have Pat be the toilet paper, because he's over there doing the trash anyway. So, maybe we'll have somebody assign to it, so you know it's going to get done. Who's had that, Pat, so?
Seems like there's a dispenser on there, I guess, yes.
No.
No.
No dispenser. Wasn't, no, the state didn't-
Yeah, we got to get one in there.
Yeah, I think-
We got to put one in.
Yeah, well-
Well, come on.
I would, I would, I expected it, but I can understand why the state doesn't, because it just, it's a lot of energy for them to have to go, because it's gone the minute they leave, you know, somebody's doing something.
I see why we're doing it, but we got to put one in there.
Kind of have toilet paper.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we got to have-
What do you mean, it's a park, there's all kinds of leaves.
We need to put a dispenser-
Round tail moth season, so just keep that in mind with the leaves.
Something that's got a spare roll.
It's really going to go downhill, isn't it? Should we get on to the-
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't have much. I'm working more on the mapping. I did want to let you know, I, I didn't ask permission to do this, but I did it anyway. I installed my Rhino program, which is a 3D design program onto my computer. And working with SHAPE files, and what I've learned about GIS is it's mainly geographic information systems, is about compiling information about space and not necessarily the best model for mapping. You use the map structure as a way to contain information. You put little information spots on it, when you want to call it up, it comes up in a spreadsheet. You get lots of different information on a map, but for actually creating the map itself, it's not the best thing. So, using a program that works on a, like an AutoCAD DXF format is much better for manipulating the actual mapping layers themselves. So, instead of taking it home and doing it at home, I brought my CDs in and I loaded them onto my computer, my laptop. When I leave, I will unload them, it's licensed to me. And the company that owns it knows when I turn it on, it goes through the internet and tells them whether or not the license is being utilized by more than one person. So, it's legal for me to load it on multiple machines. It's not legal for it to be used by multiple users at the same time. It can be used by multiple users, but only individually one at a time.
Is there any restriction to business use over-
I am a business use, it's a commercial, it's a commercial disc, because I, I had bought it for my business, so, you know, we're, we're legal with everything. It's, as far as the software companies and stuff are concerned, there's nothing there, but I just thought it's working out pretty nicely so far. And the only other thing I did want to, I did want to discuss a little bit with the board is a, a, a more structural understanding about ordinance and application. For many years, a lot of folks in town had been coming to the planning board for just informational discussions, and it's really not, it's not even considered legal to come before the planning board to do that kind of circumstance. So, some folks that have been asking me in the past that they want to come before the planning board and have an informational discussion, I have been telling them, you can't do that. It's not that they can't come before the planning board, in order to come before the planning board, they have to have an application. And I, I'm saying this publicly, because I'm hoping a public will be listening to. I want everybody to understand, if they have an application submitted to the code enforcement officer, all of their rights of appeal are preserved. It doesn't mean they're going to get a yes on what they've applied for, but their legal rights throughout the entire process, all the way to the Supreme Court, is preserved. So, if they feel like the planning board or the code enforcement officer has made an error in judgment, they can bring it to the Board of Appeals. If they feel the Board of Appeals has got it wrong, they can bring it to Superior Court and then from there to the law court. So, it's important to understand that casual conversation with the planning board is not allowed. They're an administrative board. The only thing they do is administrate the ordinances, and in order to do that, they have to have a completed application. There's no discussion until then. So, the board is pretty clear in understanding that, and I understand it's a little different than the way things have been done in the past. So, if for some reason, someone has some concerns about that and brings it to anybody, any one of us, you know, that's, just, the straight out answer is, you know, get an application. I won't refuse anyone an application, because I can deny it. I may deny their application, or the planning board may deny their application, but I won't refuse them the opportunity to apply. I can advise them sometimes as to how it seems like they may be better off going a different route, or what, you know, they may not get it. I mean, and when it comes to applying for a variance, there's very strict rules as to what you have to do to get it. And if you, if it's clearly obvious you don't meet those four criteria, I'll show them the criteria and say, you know, under these circumstances, it's unlikely, but you should, you're still free to come to the board and let them decide, because it's not my decision. So, I know sometimes people get upset, there's a lot involved in what folks want to do. Sometimes folks have a lot invested in where they want to go, and there's a lot of emotions involved, but if we keep the process really clean and straightforward, then we can avoid most of the problems.
So, for people who might be listening in, where should people go if they, because probably most of these people that want to go before the board and, you know, just to discuss something, where should they go to get some, to get the information they need bef, I mean, before they, before they fill out, because sometimes there's a lot of information you need to include in an application. Where should they go to get that information?
That under ordinances, to me. I will help them construct it, I'll help them try to understand. If, if they don't quite understand or it isn't working really well, they can, they'll still come, you know, I'll work as well as I can with them. If it gets to the point where it's just a little bit too difficult or they're not understanding, they can come before the board and the board can explain to them about what's missing or why it's necessary, or if it's necessary, and they either get it waived or come back to the board, if it's the planning board.
But there has to be an underlying application for something to-
For them to go there before.
-trigger any kind of board review or-
Absolutely. The board will, cannot hear, the planning board cannot hear anything without an application. And the application has to be complete, which is the first thing they do in the process of hearing an application, is find the application complete. Once the application is, is found complete by the planning board, that's where all the formative discussion starts, butters, whatever, whoever else might be involved in it. But until then, without a complete application, there's no discussion. And the same thing with issuing permits through the CEO. Without a complete application, signed and submitted and paid for, there's no discussion. So, I, I, on an application, if I were to deny an application that, that was under my authority rather than the planning board, I have to, like the planning board, issue a finding, which tells them why it is I'm denying it, what statutes haven't been met, or, you know, whatever the case may be, whether it's ordinance or MUBEC or anything else. I have to be, it's pretty clear in the ordinance and, and the code, what's necessary to outline for the applicant as to why it is they are being denied. That preserves their rights. Then, when they go to the Board of Appeals, the Board of Appeals can look at whether or not I had cause and/or reason under what I cited as a denial and make a determination based on that. So, it's important that we try to preserve people's legal rights within the ordinance, and I'm, sometimes it gets confusing when folks are very upset and we're trying to talk on the phone, that what got said and what got heard can differ substantially, all right? So, I'm just trying to kind of re-put it out there for folks to help them understand, and if there's any question, they can call me. Other than that, I'm good.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll take care of the-
You all going to go line up? We'll have the, Kristen?
That's right.
The runaround pond parade.
Maybe that's what should be on the cover of the town report.
Sorry, I was speaking at that one.
I'm not speaking at this one.
Administrator?
Yeah, I always get the fun ones. Because I'm dealing with the money. So, we, we did send out the tax bills, people have gotten them, they've started coming in to pay them. However, I have given you all a sheet of paper, and I just want to keep you informed that we are running a little short on cash. So, although we've written checks for these amounts to these people, I am going to hold on to these checks until we have the cash to cover it.
Makes sense.
And so, I just need you guys to know that this is what's happening, so that when I ask for a tan next year again, you'll know why.
And your, if, if it's, any of them have to go beyond the due date, you'll be, you'll contact them to let them know why.
Yes.
Why and that, that it is coming.
Yes, and to be honest, there's only one-
Yeah.
That really is a big issue. We can't go beyond the due date.
And is that the big one?
No, that one I, I could call and, and I'll probably hand deliver that one on the due date anyways.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any, any other items before, okay.
Yes, that's the one that needs to go out on time.
Selectmen's comments, there'll be regular meetings, upcoming meetings here, Selectmen on July 26 and August 9 at 6:30 PM. I'd also like to make a, just a couple of comments, thanking the Maine DOT and Wyman Simpson, A.H. Grover for all their work at the, at the new bridge, and also thanking Josh for representing the town at the bridge opening. Did a very good job at that. Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.